Roll call.
Teresa Golden.
John Eichman.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
And if everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I apologize, my voice is a little off tonight, but we'll make it through. And we have two upcoming meeting dates, one on October 4th and one on October 18th. And Pam, it's all right, I'm gonna hold over the approval of the minutes, I haven't had a chance to read through them yet. So the first item on our agenda is a decision for Fishkill Plains Holdings amended site plan.
Good evening.
Hello, anything changed since we closed the public hearing?
Uh, no, no, not since we last we met, I think things were in fairly good order last time we were here. It was just kinda getting a resolution together and moving forward.
Okay. Mike, the one, the one thing I noticed, and I apologize if I didn't ask you this during the, the public meeting, but did you receive the fire advisory board comments?
Did.
Okay, and just confirming, you're not, you have no occupancy on the third floor?
No.
Okay.
And don't plan, and don't plan to.
Okay, you'd come back if you were going to use it as an occupied floor?
Yeah, that, the third floor's actually the attic space, not to say it couldn't be converted, but there's no plan to do that.
Okay.
To the existing or, or proposed.
Okay, okay, and then the F A B also requested a monitored fire alarm system, do you have that already, or is it?
That exists.
That exists, okay, great, and I'm assuming your Knox box is up to date?
Well, you know, believe it or not, I think, we don't have a Knox box, so that, that is actually gonna be installed as part of it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, I think I noted that on the plan.
Okay, and I apologize, I just, I saw the comments tonight and I, I realized I didn't, didn't remember covering it. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments before we offer the resolution? And then, um, anything from our professionals, Dave, Michelle, Scott, anything to go over? Okay, does somebody wanna offer the resolution?
Sure. Resolution to final site plan approval, name of the site plan, site plan modification for Fishkill Plains Holding LLC. Name of the applicant, Fishkill Plains Holding LLC, C O, C O Mike Gillespie. Uh, location, 847 Route 376 Wappingers Falls, grid number 635802919525. Resolution offered by planning board member, Michael O'Brien. Whereas the applicant has applied for an amended site plan approval to include a 964 square, square foot addition to the existing 2,400 square foot building for a total of 3,364 square feet on a 1.29 acre lot. And whereas the action is considered to be a type 2 action under SEAKER for which a coordinated review was not undertaken and no further SEAKER review is required. Whereas the planning board held a public hearing on September 6th, 2016. And whereas the applicant was, has submitted a building elevations, renderings along the site, with the site plan, which were approved by the architectural review board on September 1st, 2016. And the planning board further finds that the application meets the town's requirements, excuse me, for the final site plan approval, subject to the conditions set forth below. Are there any conditions?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I see we've retained, now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby issues final site plan approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled Site Plan Modification for Fishkill Plains Holding, prepared by M. Gillespie and Associates dated June 30th, 2016. And let it be further resolved that this approval is subject to the following conditions, which must be completed before the plan is signed by the planning board chair. One, the modifications set forth in the town engineer's letter of August 31st, 2016, the town planner's letter of July 10th, 2016, and the traffic engineer's letter of July 17th, 2016. The plat will contain, excuse me, the written approval of the Duchess County Health Department before it is signed by the chair. The conservation easement for the wetland and the buffer will be approved by the town attorney. Four, an inspection fee for the town's review of the proposed improvements will be based on the, on an engineer's estimate as approved by the town engineer. Five, a landscape and lighting plan shall be approved by the town planner. Six, drainage and pavement installation shall be per the town highway specifications where applicable. Any other changes?
Um, Michelle, we have a landscape and lighting plan, right?
We do.
Has it already been approved, or is it still pending?
Um, yeah, but typically what happens is when they go, we, um, when we do the final sign off, I take a quick review of it.
Okay, all right, same with number six, the drainage and pavement? Per town highway, I'm assuming we've already reviewed that, right? Okay.
Yeah, I think, I believe, yeah, all the drainage is been reviewed.
Um, any other questions, comments, additions, changes? Okay.
Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have seconded by John Cutler and votes as follows. Uh, Michael?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Steve is absent, Teresa?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
And myself, aye, the motion carries.
Great, thanks guys.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is William Tell Hardware at Unity Plaza amended site plan on Route 82.
Hi.
Hi.
So you're in for discussions, this is the first time the board is seeing this, you want to just kinda walk us through what we're doing? And we probably have a few questions for you.
The owners are proposing to put a storage area behind the retail store in Unity Plaza, along with a propane tank and a kerosene tank. It's a tenant improvement for, um, Hopwell Hardware.
Okay.
Couple of questions, whereabouts in Unity Plaza, how many of those current stores are gonna be used for the, for the new hardware store? Which, by the way, it's great to see the hardware store coming back, so.
Okay, you'll have to excuse me, my boss is out of town, so I'm not 100% familiar with the project.
Okay.
I believe on this, like, uh, I believe this is the one that we're using, this storage area will be back in here.
Okay.
Um, this is part of the submittal that we had submitted. Um, the propane and, um, storage tanks will be over here.
So, so when I looked at the diagram, it wasn't clear that, so, so there's really, all the fencing and everything else will be behind the store itself, not behind any, anybody else's store? Okay?
Yeah, no, we have the store itself.
Okay, thank you. Um, by the way, are you, are you gonna continue to use the existing property for selling? Like, now it's like, you know, bagged products like salt and that kinda stuff?
What's there, yeah.
We just, we just need to come back to the mic.
Okay, sorry.
Um, I believe what's there, they're gonna continue to use. Um, I do know that in the future they will be, um, proceeding with a new building at the existing site.
Okay.
As a temporary.
Um, I, I thought from the plan, it looked like that the pads for the keros, was it kerosene and propane?
Yes.
And are they both, are, are those gonna, either of them replacement tanks? Or are they gonna be larger tanks that you would fill smaller tanks from?
I wanna say they're larger tanks that you'd fill the smaller tanks from.
Okay, so the propane's not like an exchange cage, it's, it's an actual propane refilling sta, refilling station?
Um, I'm sorry, I can't even answer that question for you.
Okay. I think, I think it, I think that's what the applications that I just wanted to, but really my question is, you have the two pads sitting next to each other with fences around them. Is it state regulation that prevents you from just doing one pad and putting both tanks in a single cage, or?
Um, that I'm not sure, I guess I would have, we would have to look into that.
Okay, it just seemed like, if you could put it in one place, it seemed like maybe you're.
Right, okay.
It'd be a little bit easier.
And, and the barbed wire, um, is this stuff gonna be like tremendously valuable, or is it just?
Um, well, you know, it's, it's, um, going around their product, so it's just to deter theft.
Okay, I mean, okay.
Is there a, um, picture of what that, well, is, is it gonna be like the circular wire? Or is it gonna be like a, at the top of the eight foot fence, it tilts in and has the barbed wire strings around it?
Um, no, no, that was submitted with the, only have one copy.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
So it's barbed wire, not razor wire?
Yes. But it's not something that you typically see in town as a fencing material for?
It is gonna be behind the building, so it's not gonna be visible to the street, um, to the parking lot.
So, Michelle, for, by, by our zoning, the eight, eight feet of a fence is a variance regardless, right? And then the barbed wire on top of it's probably gonna make it, I'm assuming it's, it's on top of an eight foot chain link fence, so it's gonna make it even taller than that.
Yeah, it would be, it would, I think it would be ideal if we could, um, have the same type of security with maybe lighting and an alarm rather than that type of fencing.
Yeah, like motion lights or something?
Um, and then, we don't see how motion lights would really deter as much as, um, the barbed wire of actually keeping a thief or whatever away from the products that we're trying to, you know, contain in this area.
But realistically, do you think somebody would be climbing over this fence if they wanted to get inside? Cause really, the only thing barbed wire's gonna deter is for someone climbing over.
Um, well, I suppose that would be the only way for them to access it.
Cause they're concerned about theft.
Right, but I think if.
Would just cut a door in the chain link fence if you wanted to, or just?
Yeah, not a bunch, nah, not a bunch of teenage kids back there, no, I, I think they would wanna climb right over.
And what, how are they going to get something back out and over?
Yeah, but I don't think it has any, I don't think it has anything, I don't think it's that.
Not so much theft as maybe vandalism.
I, I think it's just a physical deterrent.
Yes.
And a bright light and a camera wouldn't stop that?
The bright light, yeah, no, I don't think so, mm-mm, nope.
Versus barbed wire?
Nope, absolutely, because it blends right in in the back, if you, you're not supposed to be back there, you know you're not gonna be back there. You don't see it from the street, nobody should be back behind the.
Well, actually, that was one of my questions, do you know if the customers are gonna be actually, um, going into this area? Or is this to, just to retrieve?
I, I believe it's just to retrieve the products.
Okay, so the employees will retrieve the products and then bring them to the front?
Yes.
Is that how it's gonna work? Okay.
It's only gonna be temporary for this move, right?
Um, I believe their, their ultimate goal is to get their building back where it was.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, this is just a temporary to keep the business going.
I mean, I understand it's not a hill to die on, but it's, you know, and if it keeps the lighting lower, then.
Yeah, absolutely.
Trade offs.
Yeah, cause you got the wetlands back there and you don't need anymore light.
Is there anywhere else in town, Scott, that we have barbed wire fencing that we've approved or installed? Other than in an agricultural application?
Not, not privately, no.
Or prison, I guess, would be the other.
Not privately, I mean, does the town have anything that's barbed wire?
Oh, we have pump stations in certain facilities that are protected.
That's right, right out here in the park, there's, there's barbed wire.
But they're not, they're not private, they're public.
Okay. It's good for the goose, it's good for the gander.
Well, except we're exempt.
Pardon?
We are exempt, the town is.
So currently, like, I'm just trying to, cause I know how the old store used to work when you picked up like salt for your water softener, you would kinda drive around back, so currently the employees are gonna bring it out front and the loading will occur in the front of the store for people purchasing like larger bags of stuff?
Um, I wanna say yes, because I don't believe that we're going forward with any circulation of the property.
And can you just confirm that and let me?
We can confirm that, yes.
Cause we'll, well, if, if there is, no, no, that's okay. Cause if there's, just, in the event that there's someone's going back there, we would need to make sure there was safe access for customers to go back there and that there was circulation that they needed to get around the building. So it's a little bit of a different look that we've.
Right, exactly, um, I will definitely check with them and get back.
Okay, great, thank you.
And because there are other delivery trucks that need to deliver back there, so, for the other tenants.
Also cutting a hole, a new garage door in the back?
Mm-hmm.
So, are you planning to re-stripe the pavement in front of where the door will now be? Is it, is it going to have a different designation?
Um, if that's something that's required, then yes.
Okay.
For loading.
And do we typically put bollards on either side of those doors, or?
Um, well, certainly, I would imagine that we would need bollards in front of the propane and kerosene tanks in the event that whatever vehicles are back there, if there's forklifts or whatever, picking up pallets or whatever's happening back there, they don't, I mean, that's what we have here in Town Hall and what we've required on other applications. But I don't know if we typically require bollards in front of rolling.
That'd be under their purview, yeah.
Doors, so I think it's just up to you.
But the, but the striping in front of the door should be clear.
Should indicate that, it's a loading zone, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, and I apologize if this was in the application, I didn't see it, the size of the tanks for the kerosene and the propane?
Um, I believe that's actually on that site plan that I just handed you.
I'm seeing the size of the pads.
Of the area, um, then no, we don't have the size of the actual tanks.
Can you?
That might be something that we haven't necessarily sized out until.
Okay, if you can just confirm that for us. And then I don't know if there's additional permitting that's needed from the state for different sized tanks.
It depends on.
I'm assuming there is.
Yeah, it depends on if it's a bulk storage or not, and I'm assuming it would be, but I don't totally know.
Does that ride with the site, so if another tenant also had any kind of?
I'm not sure about that, but I can.
Okay.
Um, and I, I'm sorry, I apologize, cause I know you said this, right now that you're planning to continue to use the existing site until this opens, and then all of that operation that's at the existing site will be moved into this site, so there will no longer be anything sold from that existing site?
I believe that's the case. Um, again, if I'm, if I'm not correct on that, we'll, we'll break that statement.
Is there any lighting proposed back there? There's probably existing lighting, but is there any new lighting proposed above like the new loading door? That you know of?
Um, I don't think so, no. I think that was one of the other purposes of having the barbed wire fence instead of lighting.
Michelle, I'm sorry, were you asking for the fenced area or for the new door?
The new door, cause typically with an ingress or egress, you have some sort of light about it, yeah.
Right, so that's what we're asking.
Um, we can, we can state that on there.
Okay. And then I think depending on the site circulation, and Dave, I think you're looking at that, but, but I, I don't know, I mean, the chain link fence, I don't know whether that needs to also have bollards at the corners or something, just to?
Well, I think, uh, having reviewed the site, and I know you mentioned that there wasn't any additional, um, vehicle traffic anticipated, but is there any thought of looking at the circulation as a whole for the, for back there?
Um.
It narrows down and you're gonna, you know, with the fenced in area, it's gonna be, I don't wanna say it's critical, but it's, it is gonna be narrower than it is now.
Right.
And, um, you know, large trucks go in, you know, delivery trucks go in, in and out, both ways, it's striped for both, both ways now. Any thought to a one-way circulation?
Um, that would be something that we would have to look into.
Yeah, I, I understand, at the supermarket end, of course, you've got the trucks backing in there, it has to remain two ways to get them in and out, but directly behind the building, you know, if you could just review or take a look at it and see, you know, a one-way circulation would, would work, or could work.
Okay.
And that would require signs, et cetera.
Dave, did you take a look at the circulation on the approved site plan?
On, I didn't hear, on approved?
On the approved site plan for Unity Plaza, did you look at any of that?
Yeah, it's the existing approved.
I did, I did not.
Did you look at any circulation?
I did not look at it.
I'm just wondering why they left that big open area if it was to turn tractor trailers around?
Oh, okay. I think, there's a, there's a loading bay right there, Scott, right at the corner of the building.
But I don't know if that's enough for him to turn a tractor trailer around there.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is.
This is even two-way here.
What I'm saying is beyond the, the initial two-way, when you, you know, if you're going around the building, where the, um, supermarket loading bays are.
Um, well, it is showing as two-way all the way around, and the storage area is gonna be in here, so, you know, I don't see why that would still, why that would affect the area.
Only if that area is used to turn around, which we can go back and look at that. They gave the circulation, turning it backwards.
I guess, I'm, I'm seeing two-way traffic all the way around, so I guess I don't see why they need a turnaround.
So, by the original site plan shows, if they don't show, they don't show.
And they just need to be able to show that they can load and unload and get out of wherever they're unloading and loading.
If that's the case, then, you know, if you can, you know, display that you can safely offload and, and keep the circulation as is, but I'm just saying, having reviewed the site and having looked at it, it seems pretty, you know, congested and narrow.
Okay.
Dave, I'm assuming that if they're cutting the door in, they're gonna need to back trucks up to that door? So the circulation.
But they could still go out.
For this particular store, they would need to be able to maneuver to back.
Yeah, but when they're leaving there, they could go one way as opposed to, you know, make a right turn instead, a left turn instead of a right.
Yeah, I'm just talking about to get, to get the back of the truck facing the door that's being cut into the building, they're gonna need to somehow be able to reverse and back in, so just wherever that fence is, you need to know that the truck, it's.
I believe they have enough room, to tell you the truth, that, you know, I looked at it and I kinda figured out where the, the fenced in area was, there was enough room to back a truck in, I'm just worried about leaving the site and trying to make that turn, which is a blind turn.
And I think you have initial comment letters from our professionals, there are probably a couple other, um.
And I can provide you, um, my notes from tonight, so we can make sure that you got all, everything that information that was requested of you.
Um, yeah, the, the letter from Morris Associate, Associates, is that what you're asking?
Um, you should have three letters, there'd be, do we have a traffic letter for tonight?
I did not submit, I, I just had a chance to look at the site.
Okay.
I'll get my notes too.
Okay.
So there'll be comments within those letters, it just, you know, either address the comment with an explanation or tweet to the, you know, whatever it is?
Absolutely, yes.
Um, any other questions or comments tonight? Okay, do you have any other questions or comments for us?
I don't.
There's a few things we just need answers for, and I think a couple probably tweaks that you'll make, and then we'll have you back in for discussion again.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Feels Like Home Daycare Special Permit from Heritage Court.
Good evening. Sorry, we didn't know it was a, a formal event here, we would've put a little better clothes on.
You're fine.
A little over four years ago, my wife told me she was pregnant with her first, uh, she was working in a, uh, a daycare facility in Bedford Hills, so I'm like, why don't we do this in our house? You know, stay at home, raise the kids, and still use her degree. So, uh, we had a apartment, uh, spaced in the basement level that we turned into a daycare facility. Uh, we first started at a informational seminar up in the Over Rocker Road in Poughkeepsie about the daycare facilities, knew nothing, had zero knowledge. Uh, went there, it was about an hour long, and we were the only ones asking questions, and basically, we thought we knew everything to do to get under the way with, uh, doing proper business, and no one said anything about coming to the town for a special use permit, so we had no knowledge. They did say go to the town, we did come here. We actually put an addition on to the, uh, space in the, into, uh, the unfinished part of the basement, which we got a C O for, so the town inspector was in there and everything. Still then, no one made use of, or made.
Comment?
A comment about a special use permit, didn't know it existed, so here we are. Uh, been in business for over three years, trying to do everything on the up and up. We got a copy of all the, uh, liability insurance and, and workers' comp and everything else under the sun, uh, her.
I emailed pictures as well for parking in the, the, um, play area.
Are you registered with Duchess County?
Yes, we got our license here.
Okay. So, Scott, this came from the engineer's office, right?
No.
How did this wind up?
It came from the building department.
It came from, you know, it came from, um, I think there was some sign, signage that they had put up. I think that was what started it, right, it was like flag signs, so they were, they, I guess somebody from the building department noted the flag signs, and then it came back.
The inspector Max came over and said, remove the, uh, there were like 12 foot flags forthwith, where I moved them, I removed them that same day when I go home from work.
And those were just temporary because it just said now enrolling it.
But we do have a.
I'm just curious how you want it now.
We're, we're on the radar now, but, um, we do have a 15 foot banner that's suspended between two stone columns that's, you know, all advertising for the business.
As long as you didn't say, well, it was the fireworks or something like that.
Did you give a copy of your Duchess County permit to the planning office, do we have the copy of that? Did you have it with you tonight?
Uh, yeah, we have it with us, yep, if you want it.
Okay, can, can I just ask you to?
Your permit.
Okay. What, one of the, one of the things that, basically what you need to be able to run a daycare in your house is a special permit from the planning board, and one of the requirements is that you be licensed through the county, so we just need to see that you're licensed.
Yep, and, uh, we get inspected by the New York State Fire Inspector periodically, at random, too.
Now, that also says, I think, September 22nd, that it ends, um, with, um, the Child Care Council, they're sending me my new license, I just renewed it, so I'm just waiting for my new license to come in.
Okay.
The only thing they told us at the seminar in Poughkeepsie was, you know, go to the town, and then town told us notify the local P D and the local fire department that we're gonna be opening a daycare facility, which we did.
Sure.
And actually, I thought it was, we bought the house privately back in 2010, and the lady told us that it was a legal apartment. Lo and behold, and I came down here for the C O for the license packet, and it was not a legal apartment. So I had to get a permit through the town, again, not trying to hide anything. And, um, no one said boo about a, you know, a special use permit then either. So twice I came here and got two different C Os for the business, the new addition that we did last year, and also initially to get the C O for, you know, the space that was the original daycare area space. Which ended up being twice the money, cause it was already finished, yada, 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 so.
Right, right, so, um, we took a, a quick look at the, at the aerial of your property, and it looks like you have a pond in the back?
Correct.
So you have a play area that's fully fenced in?
Uh, two, two pool regulations specs that was passed already by the inspector.
Okay, and then is the pond itself, does it have like a, a fence around it, or?
No.
No, but they said that they didn't need it, they do not leave the fence in the area.
Okay, and then it also looked like there was a, a parking lot in the back, is that where the parents drop children off?
They come directly through the gate and that's where they drop off. You don't get the kids outside.
At the front of the house or in a parking area in the back?
It's in the back.
Okay.
Our driveway comes all the way down, it wraps around.
Up around the side of the house, and then just parking in the rear.
Is that a shared driveway with another house, or is, that's just your, okay.
Okay.
Any, any other permitting or anything like that, that's, that you have at the house right now?
Permits?
Yeah. Or any, anything else?
Outstanding, you mean, permits?
Yeah, yeah.
I applied for a, uh, permit for a hot tub.
Okay, okay, but that's, would be separate from where the daycare area?
Max came for the pre-inspection last week, it takes four to six weeks to get the tub in, so.
Okay.
Everything else got a C O for, that I apply for.
Okay, so, um, Michelle provided us, and for those of you that have her comment letter with you, Michelle provided us with the conditions, um, that, that need to be met in order for us to give you a special permit.
Okay.
So the first is that we must know, know that you're a private residence, which I think Heritage Court were fa- fairly comfortable, you're zoned residential, it's a private house.
Correct.
Um, and that you meet all zoning requirements, so, um, the parking area in the back that I could see on the aerial map, that, that's just used for the pickup and drop off of the students? Okay, and it's not.
We park in the front of the house.
Say it again?
We park in the front of the house.
Park in the front of the house, okay. And then the, the second condition is the proposed provider must be certified by Duchess County Department of Social Services or its appointed agent, um, that you meet the requirements of that department and you've received clearance from the Central Registry on Child Abuse. I'm assuming that license.
Yeah, that, all that is in the, uh, application for the license.
Okay.
As far as like, you know, also CPR training and first aid and everything.
Okay, okay, um, is there, is there something that shows that you've applied for the renewal of this license? Or, because for us to grant you a special permit, when what you're giving us is saying it expires in a couple of days?
We have emails from the, I mean.
I mean, we, we bought a certificate of, uh, the nomination from the council here, that she won the outstanding daycare award for Putnam Dodge County last year.
So, so, I guess what I'm getting at is, are you gonna be comfortable that if we give you a conditional approval that says you have to bring your license in before it actually will go past the 22nd of September?
I'm waiting on them, I, I don't know, I mean. I mean, I'm sure they'll give it to me because that's when it does expire. They're pretty-
So what happens if they don't get you your license by the 22nd of September?
That's, I mean, I work with a, she's my licenser, so she knows, she comes to inspect me. So she's the one that's gonna send it to me, so it wouldn't be any like violations, I guess, if-
Okay.
That wasn't a question.
And forgive us, we're just, we don't have very many of these, so we just don't know the process.
It's up to her, because if it were a violation, she's the one who would write me up. So she's the one who's sending me my license.
And I, I did speak with the county, I did speak with Tom Larkin.
Okay, yeah.
And he did tell me that they, that they had passed a fire inspection, and that he was trying to figure out why it hadn't been received yet. Because we, I called him to say, you know, can you just let me know verbally at least at your-
The license?
The renewal, yeah.
The renewal.
Yeah, and he didn't, he was named-
Because we, part of our process is to verify that you have the licensing.
Right. So he, he was, did not get back to us today, but hopefully we can follow up with him.
The CFO that he gave-
Well, you're, you're obviously licensed until the 22nd.
Right.
So, but we just need to make sure that we have that paperwork before we issue a special permit.
Okay.
Does that sound like we can just come down here during normal business hours and add into?
Yeah, you could probably even scan it to show it to me, or I can actually confirm it with Tom Larkin.
Or we come down here and do it again?
Somebody to tell me that you're, you have a license.
You know what it was too? I was waiting, my, I just had a baby, so I was waiting for his medical records, so I had to submit that, so maybe that's what was the holdup, I don't know. But I can call her tomorrow and get her-
And the reason that would have been an issue is because the licensing actually has to state how many children are in the household that they have. Because they, they have to subtract those out of the number that they're allowed to have, so that may have affected-
Right, that counts as pupils.
Yeah.
So how many children are you permitted to have?
I can have up to 16, but I don't right now. Way under that.
Okay.
And that's including being in ratio on that 16.
Okay.
Okay, and then there's, oh, sorry, go ahead. I think the only other, the only other issue is when, I don't know who went out, was it Rick that went out? And noticed that there was a, a commercial vehicle parked, which technically requires also a special permit? Because for, for a tree service, do you operate a tree service out of the house?
I do, yes.
Okay. So, so that's the only other issue. They have currently a tree, he has a tree service. And do you just leave that vehicle, that's a vehicle that you use personally, and then drive to whatever the jobs are, and then you drive it home? Or how does it work for you? You're not, are you operating the tree service out of that garage, or does it-
No, no, just, I just park in there.
So our code requires that you have a special permit for a commercial vehicle parked in a residential home.
Okay.
Huh? Wait a minute, really?
Yes, yes. For, if it's, if it's a business like a tow truck or a-
You mean like every electrician, or?
They're supposed to have a, a, it's not, it's like a, it's a permit, just to say that you're a licensed person and, yeah.
Who, who issues the special permit? Is it this board or?
It's the building department typically, yeah.
The building department, okay.
Wow.
I'll get right on it.
It's not the zoning?
No, it's, it's the zoning board issued it? I thought it was, I thought it was the building board that issued it. Okay, I apologize, it's the zoning.
I think it is zoning.
I believe that's a public hearing and all that, right?
Does anybody in the town have that permit?
Yes.
I was gonna say.
Yes, there is somebody that has it. Yeah, there, in fact, recently, right, a tow truck just got one, yeah.
You know, I read this, I mean-
It's, it's relatively new. It's a relatively new rule that was put in, I think, it was a 2014.
So would he be grandfathered if he's had the trucks for longer than that being in place?
I don't think there's a grandfather clause.
There's no grandfathering of that.
Yeah, here it is. Chapter 194.
I just handed it that way.
I mean, let's, let's support this business. I mean, I, okay, I understand we gotta do these things, but I'm also, I'll be honest with you.
It's a different issue, Michael.
It's a different issue, I'm just, I'm just, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because technically, the first section of the, of the approval for the special permit says that you have to meet all applicable zoning requirements. And that would be an applicable zoning requirement.
So that would be one of them, right? Falls under that umbrella.
I'm sorry, was that, I missed that.
The special permit, one of the first requirement of the special permit is that the planning board must find that the home is a private residence, and then it meets all applicable zoning requirements.
Okay.
So this would be an applicable zoning requirement technically.
Okay. They're not big trucks, it's an F-350, but it's a small mason dump.
Okay. Well, so we just, and that-
So is this board able to issue a special permit tonight? With the, with the understanding-
It's down to the zoning board.
That there may be another permit that's needed from the zoning board for-
I mean, I think technically, they should have that permit from the zoning board in order to meet number one.
Okay. So this is-
Unless he decides not to drive that truck home.
This is a, this, Michelle, this is a business, though, I'm assuming you have students, children that you're caring for.
Well, but they've also been operating without a special permit for, for quite a while, and obviously, right.
I don't wanna have folks walking out of here that have no daycare now suddenly because, you know, we're not able to act right now.
Sound belligerent, but I've been on this board for like eight years, and this is the first one of these I've seen.
Yeah, second, but yes.
Lower one.
I know there's quite a few daycares in this town.
There are, yes, there are.
Maybe they don't have them either, I don't know.
Yeah, they probably don't.
All the others had buildings.
Because like I said, we went, you know, to the informational center, you know, for a seminar, thought we're doing everything on the up and up. And we came here and said we're open a daycare, and no one said anything about a permit.
So I want, just, just bear with us for a second. I understand. Michelle, what I'm thinking is, and I don't know what the requirement is on the planning board as far as a special permit goes, but I'm thinking that we could grant them a special permit for, say, 60 days to give them time to get to the ZBA. To make sure you give us your renewed license so that we've got all your ducks in a row. And that way, we've got a business that has a temporary, I don't know if we can do like a temporary special permit, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know either, actually, to be honest with you. I mean, I think we could probably condition for it as part of the special permit.
It's not a good time for precedent.
I make a motion for 60 days.
We're without an attorney this evening, so usually. But, yeah, I think maybe we could just condition for it. That's what I would do.
So in the meantime, I have to-
Get through the ZBA in 60 days, will you? Necessarily, based on timing.
Okay, 90 days through the, through year end? I mean, I don't want, I'm not looking-
90?
Make, make you not run your business. I'm looking to figure out how we get you through all of the permitting processes.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So we can, we can condition that they receive the proper, you know, permit for the commercial vehicle-
Within?
Within 90 days.
90 days, 120 days?
I mean, I'm not saying 90 would be appropriate. And then hopefully it would happen sooner than that, but that way it at least gives you 90 days.
What entails in that is?
It's, it's, you have to go to the zoning board and, and let them know. And I think there is a public, public notice requirement, right? Your neigh, at least your neighbors, right?
We live on a small road with only two houses on it. What's that? Yeah, and, you know, they both know.
It's everybody within 500 feet, because it's a regular public hearing.
Right. And DPs are our neighbor, so, I mean, they're never there.
Okay. So we can walk you through that process? If you, maybe you could come into the planning office?
Right.
Zoning office?
What?
Well-
What kind of truck is it?
It's an F-350.
Okay, so it doesn't have a-
Just a small mason dump.
Okay.
The reason it was brought to our attention is because on the aerial, you could see there were, there were other structures on the property. And we had to confirm that everything met applicable zoning, and we weren't sure what those structures were, and we went out and-
Do you own the truck?
I own it, yeah.
Okay.
So we're here, we're in this room tonight, so we can't, until the meeting's over, we wouldn't be able to help you. But I could give you my phone number, you could call me tomorrow, and I can walk you through what you have to do. There, Pam.
Probably Thursday, it'd be better.
Here's a copy of the law if you want it.
Yeah, thank you, Jason.
What?
I'm gonna give you language to offer a motion. So Michelle, you're saying we could do, we can conditionally approve the special permit with two conditions. The first would be submission of your updated license by September 22nd. And the second would be a ZBA approval-
And what is that?
Commercial vehicle.
Okay.
Is it one vehicle, or do you have more than one commercial?
Oh, I got two.
Two, okay. Of commercial vehicles.
What's the second vehicle?
GMC. It's a 6500.
Okay, 6500.
Yeah, but zoning's only gonna allow them to have one. Okay, I'd like to make a motion first. Sorry?
Hold on.
And that was a ZBA, you said?
Yeah, zoning, yeah, zoning.
They look a lot like us, but they're a lot less fun.
That's not true.
He didn't just say that.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for a special permit, subject to two conditions. One, submission to, of the Dutchess County licensing by September 22nd to the planning office. And two, to the ZBA for approval of the commercial vehicle in a residential lot.
Vehicles.
Vehicles, correct.
Vehicles, sorry. He asked what it was.
That, that, for the zoning board, for the trucks, that would be like a permit, like a annually permit that had to renew every year, or is this a one-time?
It's a one-time, yeah.
It's a one-time thing, yeah.
I'll second that motion.
I don't think you're gonna get two vehicles.
It's a one-time in more ways than you know.
And then for the license, if it's, I mean, again, you said you need it here by the 22nd, 20th, so if it's not-
Well, if I can at least get a verbal that you have it, that that's renewed, or they're renewing it, or whatever, from, from Tom, that would be-
Yeah, he's not my licenser, though.
Yeah, but he-
Do you need to call up to my licenser?
That would be great.
She's the one who-
That would be great.
Okay.
You can give me her contact. Yeah, if you give me, I'll give you my contact information and just have her give me a call, okay?
Let the board note that we do not want this business impacted, so.
Well, they need to have proper licensing to be able to operate.
I understand that.
We just need the assurance that you have, and that's really what we're getting at. Michelle, and I'm sorry, there was a third condition here that I didn't touch on yet. Are we, did we meet the third condition, which is the map drawing or photograph to the planning board sufficient for the board to determine that sufficient-
There, she provided photographs. I looked at them, there seems to be quite a large area where folks can park and pull up and-
I saw the park, kind of the parking area in the back, so I think, okay. All right. I'm sorry, just wanted to be sure. So I have a motion for the issuance of the special permit, subject to the two conditions Michael outlined, submitting your license, or making sure the planning office has confirmation you have one. And then also getting your ZBA approval for your commercial vehicles. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So you're, you're done with us, but you have a couple more steps to take. Please make sure you get us your license or stay in touch with Michelle so she can talk to your license.
Just what happens after the 90 days? Do they come back, or?
No, we granted the special permit, subject to them getting approval from the ZBA for the commercial vehicle, so they don't have to come back here.
All right, I can come down here on Thursday and get-
There's no 90-day permit then?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
There's no 90-day permit then? That's off the table?
I, Michelle didn't, wasn't sure we could issue a temporary special permit.
Yeah, I don't know if you can issue it.
So you just issued the permit with conditions?
Yeah, with conditions. And if they don't meet those conditions, then they have to come back and-
Okay.
Meet your conditions, then you don't have to come back to us.
So I can come down here Thursday and get the application for the trucks and get that going?
Yes.
Okay, great.
You go to the planning office, which is actually upstairs.
Okay.
Good luck.
Planning and zoning office.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
God bless America, go down on trouble.
Right on.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a sketch plan review for Hopewell Square on Route 376. And again, I apologize for my voice, guys, I know I sound ridiculous tonight.
You promised you'd end by singing, were we?
Good evening, Tim Allen of Bivou Associates, representing the giggly audience who are here tonight. You probably know the property just south of here, which is Hopewell Square. The existing daycare office building is here. We are proposing a 16,450 square foot office slash medical slash retail mixed-use building on the property. The property is a little over four acres. In the, what is it, the PRPD zone, it requires a five-acre lot. We can have that discussion in a few minutes, but we're proposing the building. An existing sewage pump station pumps sewage up to Route 376. So the sewage will be handled through that system. Parking is 99 spaces for the required use. Access proposed is through the existing entrance and two-way traffic around the building, both front and back. The building will sit as a ground floor at the back and work its way up to the second floor at the top. So it's a two-tiered building. In laying this out, we designed off the floodplain. So in laying this out, the floodplain is roughly 254. We worked our way up to the road. Right now, it's a balanced site in terms of what we're proposing. We think this is a nice use for the property. Works well in terms of the corridor. And this is sketch plan, we're here to, to obviously get your feedback. It's the first time you've seen it, obviously. We're looking for your input on where we go with this.
Okay. And this is all one lot, right? So it's the second building on the existing lot?
All one lot, correct.
Okay. So I remember when we looked at the existing building, there was some wetlands and buffer area at the back to the rear of the property. Have you had the buffer area flat or the wetland?
The wetland proper, all the maps we've seen, is fairly far back. I think you're probably referring to the floodplain, which, which comes through here, but we can double, we can double check that.
The spring floods, but-
There's a, there's a large DEC wetland, but it's, it's, I think we had it at 400 feet from the site.
Okay, so you're, you don't have the buffer on your property.
But is, is there, I, and I don't know, because I couldn't tell 100% from the aerial that I looked at. I saw that there was sort of like a, it looked to be maybe like a drainage or something, but it looked like it was a relatively recent, like man-made drainage. It didn't look like it was a natural stream or anything, sort of-
From the existing building?
It, it goes into the, yeah, it looks like it comes from the parking area potentially of the existing building and kind of cuts across the back.
It's a catch space in the back. Drainage comes through that parking lot.
Okay.
We can take a look at that also.
Okay.
Certainly, we can, we can make that better if we need to be.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, when I looked at the drawings, it was, you're, you're gonna raise the overall site. How much, how much fill do you envision bringing in there for?
Actually, the site is balanced the way we have it now. Because we're working off of the existing grade, we're cutting for the building. The building, if you imagine a wedge, it's in a, it's in a cut fill, walkout in the back, first floor at the, at the top. So overall, the site is, is very balanced, much to my client's disagreement. After we, we actually did the sections through the drawings, if you just look on page three, I believe, or four of our drawings, we cut sections through the whole property to demonstrate that. that.
And it's office and medical, it's not gonna be retail, or...
We have a retail entity on the plan. The, right now, there are no tenants. We're envisioning maybe a restaurant there, with some, you know, shops, nothing major. The building's not that large to do anything large, but it's conceptual now in terms of the way we laid it out. We did a nice mix of the three uses.
And have you done, just because it always comes up in East Fishkill, the environmental map, or have you contacted the New York Area Program? Because inevitably, you will, it'll show that you have some sort of Indiana habitat on, or potential for Indiana belt habitat.
We've already started, we've already started a long form EAF.
Okay, great, perfect, okay. So we just have to...
Yes.
Go through that process. And then, one of the... The building also will require ARB approval.
Right.
They've provided a preliminary landscaping and lighting plan, but I would need, like to see a little bit additional information. When you have it, I know that this is the first discussion, and if there's any changes in the layout, you'll be changing that around, so when, when there's some sort of agreed-upon site layout, I just need to know what the lighting and the landscaping is gonna look like, and what you may be proposing as fixtures. All location of any proposed signage. And then the other two comments I have are related to traffic, so I'm gonna defer to you, but I had thought that perhaps, because of the mix of uses and the number of parking spaces, that they might need to do a little trip gen number for you, and then also just kind of show how the ingress and egress and circulation would work on the site.
Yeah, and Michelle, there's, there's only a single drive here now to be shared between the two buildings, so I didn't know whether we wanted to, and maybe the grade doesn't allow for another entry point on 376, but...
Yeah, right now, we've showed the one entrance. We can certainly look at that in terms of a separate entrance. It would probably, as you go, obviously, you'd probably separate these as far as possible. There are a number of factors involved in that. Number one, yes, sir?
Curve, the curve.
What's that?
It's gonna push it down by that curve, which is...
Yeah, that's, that's one of the issues.
I'm thinking more of like a writing right now, sort of...
Again, it's...
I don't know, it may not make sense, and that's fine, but I just, I didn't know if you'd already looked at it.
We, we started to look at it. The, obviously, DOT has to approve it, which is, site distance is obviously an issue. If you'll see on our zoning chart, we're close on a four acre lot, which, again, we'll get back to in one second, we're required five acres. I believe in the code per section one ninety-four fifty-five, I believe we have to go to the town board for the fact that we're slightly under the five acres required by the zone. So that's a determination that...
Yeah, and, 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 as far as full disclosure, I, I've noticed a little irregularity in the zoning for here, because I think you may actually be zoned PCP, which is Planned Commercial Park, and I, I don't think it will impact the types of uses that you can have here. It may actually simplify some of the process, but I have to, I have to look into it, and we have a little bit of discrepancy on some of the zoning maps, so I just need to get that figured out, and I wanted to speak with Tom about that. So just, just making you aware, and I will look into that tomorrow, because I'm gonna be here, and speak with Tom, okay?
The zone was pretty clear on the map, is there...
Well, what, you had PRDP showing up, because I have PCP on the map that we have.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That brings us back to the daycare, potentially.
It brings us back to the daycare, potentially, because of this, but obviously, that's something we'll, we will need to work out. Right, and, and to be perfectly honest...
Have to do some housekeeping.
It may be, it may be best to just zone it B1, and then that would take care of everything. Because when we did the daycare special permit, we also included, when, when they revised the special permit to allow daycare, they also allowed it, and in addition to the PRDP, they allowed it in B1. So these, these zoning districts are a little bit older, and we just have to look at that.
So, Michelle, I don't...
But just while we're on the subject, if it goes B1, then that's another action before the town board, which is gonna take a little more time. It may be able to happen concurrently, but...
Right, but if he has to go to the town board anyway, for what he's going for, then for, because of the...
Under-sized?
Yeah.
And, and the B1 takes care of the undersized?
The B1 would take care of everything, pretty much. So that's what I wanted to speak with Tom about.
And on that note, also, going back to ramifications of a separate entrance, we're close to the coverage on the, on the lot, and obviously, if we put it in another driveway, that'll put us over that coverage of fifty percent.
Okay.
So those are a couple things that we will work out. If it works, and it also would require lifting the site up, we were pretty adamant about trying to stay out of the floodplain, there may be a wall in the back, but also, we'll come back to comments that you received from our associates, which comes back to stormwater. We've got it basically at grade in the back, where the stormwater system would sit under the pavement. If we have to go up, then we'd have to look at the, the deeper system. That still needs to be worked out also.
And then maybe it's just a matter of, that the driveway as it exists can support the, the full use of both buildings, or maybe you have a third lane, so you have a turning left-hand turn and a right-hand out? I don't know, that the existing driveway...
That could be another option.
It, it seems like a lot of, especially for the use that you're proposing on the new building, it just seemed like it might be a lot of cars for the one drive, so we'll see. And if it's, if it's not, if it works, that's great, I just wanna make sure, since it's sketch...
Land use is gonna hinge on your trip generation, you know, the land use and trip generation?
Right.
And it may also trigger interest from DOT, as far as permitting and adjusting your driveway. But again, until we see those figures, you know, it's just speculation right now. The other point I have, there is, is there any plan for, say, an emergency access? Not, not a full-blown access driveway, but secondary access to the site?
From the road, from, from, potentially, obviously, we can come in steeper if that were the case, it wouldn't be a full-blown entrance, so...
Yeah, it would be an emergency access.
And we could probably cut down on coverage, because that could be a, a grass paper or something that would be...
Okay.
And the other thing is, side circulation. For trucks, I'm not sure, where, the delivery, you don't have a delivery point, mile to the side plan, but our truck circulation will be...
It's been our, our experience in a lot of these, where UPS truck or a WV Mason, everything, they pull up to the front door and they just park there, but certainly, we'll, we'll define the door.
Yeah, just demonstrate where it's needed, you know, they're gonna have to go around the building and at least show that they can...
Certainly. So you're looking for turning maneuvers?
Yeah, yeah, turning diodes, where necessary, applicable.
And there is no alternative.
Overall, we'd like to, we'd like to start with, first of all, coming back in with preliminary with the issues that we've discussed in terms of whether or not we're gonna be one-way, two-way, that, or as an option, the existing entrance is wider and allow for, probably would be left-hand, left, left turn, right-hand lane out.
If, if it's necessary, again, I just, it's the initial look at the plan, so, you know...
And follow up with the comments we received, we'd like to go to preliminary on our next submittal, which then would obviously start the secret process with a full-blown EAF for your review, obviously, before it's, it's, that starts. And I think that's about it, we're gonna start with our...
Michelle, you mentioned in your comments you wanted the long-form EAF?
Yes, and actually, I believe also Morris had the same comment, just because of the, the complexity of some of the issues, just a long form would help mesh out the traffic and the potential for wetlands and habitat and stuff that we just need to kind of cross off.
We, we assume that.
Okay. And then once we have that, we can declare a lead agency so they can circulate, because you need the long form to circulate.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question? Is there any thought down the road of switching the daycare from the existing building to this building, or are you, I know you did a lot of work to create that daycare, are you set in stone that that's where the daycare is gonna stay?
Depends, depends on the rent.
That daycare is gonna stay where it is?
No, the answer is no, I was... That's what we got. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the DePaulo amended site plan on Route 216.
Application is speechless.
Dave, can I trouble you to just see if, if somebody's not there for DePaulo? Nope, there he is.
There he is. Hello, Newman. Do we need that?
I can do that for you.
I have to admit, this one's an interesting one. So you're, you're gonna be storing cars?
So we're here for a sketch plan review for the DePaulo amended site plan, and Mike, since this is the first time, if you want to give us a quick overview?
I would love to, thank you. Tonight, actually, this is, we're not here for a formalized application, we are here for a, basically, a kind of a meet and greet, a few bucks, just to keep everybody happy, and then to be able to have the opportunity to get before this board and kind of discuss the proposal. With me tonight is Steve DePaulo, he's the owner of the property. Before I, we made our way to here, we've actually been before two other boards in this town, under the same kind of guise. One is the zoning board of appeals, all right, and I'll explain that, as to why we went there, as we move on, in addition to the architecture review board, okay? So we've been both those boards, getting some feedback, some input relative to them, and now this is our, our, our third stop, so... Hello? Okay. I was specifically asked to use this, because I have a low tone. So where this site is located, we're in a B1 zone on 216. As you make that ninety-degree turn on 216 by the gas station, you head north, you have Brady's on the left-hand side, this is the property right past Brady's. Again, this is a five point seven four acre parcel, it's currently a residential use, okay, in a B1 zone. So first thing is, is that residential use has pre-existed there for quite some period of time, and it's been allowed to remain because it's pre-existing. So one of the, one of the, aspects of this is that we're taking a, a property that's within a business zone, and we're taking the residential use away, and we're moving toward a business use. A little more conforming. So number two is the, the, the existing building that resides, the existing residence, okay, is fourteen foot off the property line, okay, as it exists today. In the B1 zone, we are required to have a forty-foot setback. So based upon the presence of an extensive New York State DEC wetland that resides on the back of the property, this is again, a five point seven acre parcel, I venture to say that the wetland probably takes up maybe seventy-five to eighty percent of the property, which is this line here, back. With that DEC wetland, we also have a hundred-foot buffer, which extends in this location here, which goes through the existing garage and on the backside of a planter, off the backside of the, of the residence. We get very constrained relative to the available area by which we can work in, okay? And trying to stay out of the wetland, and trying to stay out of the associated buffer, which always makes good sense, we are proposing in the front, a large commercial building of eighty-four hundred square foot total, okay? We've done some work relative to taking a look at the proposal and the building prior to even coming here, it's just kind of an ongoing thing with us and the client, and, and trying to figure out the best way to be able to make this work and minimize the variances and, and things that we need. And at one point, before we got here, and before the other boards, we actually had a wider building, all right? This building is proposed to be one forty length and sixty foot wide, okay? The nature of the business is exactly what you mentioned, is the, the storage, okay, of high-end luxury and antique automobiles, okay, in a, in a climate-controlled condition, okay? The, the majority of the use would occur in terms of, of people driving there on the weekends, or if there was a car show, or something along those lines, people would actually take their car and then they would leave, but again, that primarily happens on the weekends.
What's the difference between this and like your average warehouse?
A lot more expensive.
Yeah, I know, a lot more expensive, but, I mean, here's what I'm thinking, I mean, you know, if we, you know, we grant this, and it's, you know, it, does it open up for like later automobile uses versus really what you're describing is a warehouse?
I believe that there will be an office in this building.
Yes, and I just haven't got there yet.
Most warehouses have an office.
Let's, let's let Mike finish what he's walking us through.
So within this building, in addition to having vehicles there, we're also going to have an office, okay, with bathroom and, and so forth, and there will be someone there on a full-time basis, that'll sit there during the course of the day and weekends, that, that kind of monitor the activity and so forth. The, the...
Is it, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I know, I know, that one's on me, sorry.
So, again, I, I guess I'll go, one of the, one of the concerns, which was readily apparent, was the size of the building, okay, in terms of the proximity to the front line, okay? And there's a lot of, a lot of things that overlap here relative to the architecture review board, planning, zoning. Zoning has a little bit of concern relative to the size and the proximity to the site, what can be done to buffer that, is that, you know, landscaping, well, that would primarily be this board, so there's, and architecture review board brought that up as well, so there's a lot of, of overlap here, relative to concerns based upon this, the way this is being proposed, and, and, again, the type use and the size of the building. That being said, again, we initially had a building that was effectively fourteen foot off the front, front yard property line, which again, is, is what currently exists there now.
And how wide is that house?
The house?
How, how wide is it?
Compared to the hundred and forty feet, how wide is it?
I don't have a number on that, but this is a thirty scale, so I'd say thirty, thirty-five feet, something along those lines.
Mike, what does this building look like?
I don't know if we know that yet.
Well, we went to the architecture review board, and we had a long, lengthy discussion regarding the look of this building. We are also kind of in, even though this is a B1 zone, this is kind of a transitional area, because we have some, we have some, we're residential now, but we also have a lot of residences around us. We also have Brady's next door and so forth, so one of the things that, at least, we've had the luxury, and Steve's been willing to do, is be able to be fairly open-ended relative to the way this building will look, so it, so, so it translates well within this area, okay? I did not bring architecturals here tonight, I, the first stop we had made was architecture review board. I didn't bring them to the, to the zoning board either, only because I think that there's gonna be some significant changes between the last submission we have and this one, and I didn't also, didn't want to plant anything in your mind, but fair to say that we're trying to, to, to make this work relative to, again, understanding this is a transitional area, and trying to conform with not only the businesses are there, but also trying to employ a lot of the, the residential components as well.
Where I was going was, this is gonna look, this is gonna be a big box, right?
Well, it's square now.
Right, I mean...
Yes.
But I mean, it's not gonna be a building. We're not using the word corrugated, are we?
Well, the, the, the town of East Fishkill, the town of East Fishkill architecture review board, I think, as well as the code, is very clear about the fact that they do not allow metal buildings. That's been going on for a long time.
Yeah, I would think you wouldn't want one of those anyways, for...
What do you mean, I wouldn't?
High-end customers in terms of...
Again, you know, I, I don't think that we're there yet, I mean, we, we've been bounced around with a bunch of different ideas, but we haven't committed to anything, because we want to make sure that it's aesthetically friendly to the neighbors, as well as the other...
Okay, that's all you had to say.
I'm sorry, Mike, I think you said this, but I missed what you said, how tall is this building?
For the B1s, I'll answer this like I answered it normally at the ZBA. This building will be less than the maximum required as permitted by the B1 zone.
So you don't have a required height that you're shooting for?
Well, I guess what I can do is explain it, and I get more details in terms of the building use, okay, which is, which is important, okay? I think thirty-five feet is the, thirty or thirty-five feet is...
To the midpoint of the roof line, right?
From, right, from average, between the peak and the eve. So we'll certainly be below that. I don't necessarily know if we even go, have to go that high, okay? We did, I don't remember exactly what the calculation is when we did our initial elevations, but certainly was, was equal to or less than. People pull into this building, there's an overhead door, you come in off of 216, and a car drives up, and there's a twenty-foot overhead door that sits in front of you, on a sixty-foot wide building. So what you do is you pull in, there's an office to the right, okay, which will be boxed out and so forth, and then there is a, a row of lifts, okay? So these, you'll have about fifteen cars on the left, taking the office off on the right, you're probably more twelve, thirteen, and, and you'll have cars that sit on the bottom floor, and then there'll be a lift for another, another car up top, so you're having, you'll have two cars.
Only two, or are you gonna stack more than two?
Well, I mean, obviously, the plan has always been for two, I mean, there, if we have the room in height, and we were able to grow into that point, and then replace the equipment that we have with a triple lift, then we would have plenty of room, even if we reduced the, the level of height, we would still have plenty of room, because the actual, either, either vehicle would probably require somewheres around sixty inches or less.
Okay, so you need about twenty feet to have three levels, or...
Yeah, that would, that would be sufficient.
So just, just to get an idea, and that, so the function of the height is a function of the use.
So while it may not interior have multi-stories, you're probably gonna be over twenty feet in height?
Likely, yes. Again, Brady's next door is, is...
It's gonna have a twenty-foot door, it's gonna be over twenty.
Right. It's, Brady's next door has a, you know, I mean, has two-story building and with, with the, so, you know, we're not looking to try and surpass that, or to be out of line with regards to what's next door, again, thinking, trying to, trying to keep things a little bit...
Mike, did you say twenty-foot high or twenty-foot wide door?
High. High.
I'm just curious why you need a twenty-foot high door?
I have, the, the designation there is twenty-foot overhead door, okay, but, you know, that was actually for, for width. Now, again, whether it's fourteen feet, you know, we'll...
Fourteen feet is sufficient, and there's nothing...
Bridges are what, fifteen?
Thirteen, six, fourteen, depending where.
Yeah, that was, that was to designate the width.
And then, just a question, do you know for certain that's where the wetland line is, or have you, have you guys been out?
This, this actually, the, the wetland line follows the tree line, this is, as, as it was when we did Fishkill plans, we went out some time ago, I mean, back in '06, and did this line, looking at certain, certain things. I think at one point, when the garage went up, we had to get the line delineated, it has been re-upped, we just haven't got the map back yet, but the line hasn't changed. I don't see that line.
You don't think it's gonna move further back into the property?
I don't, I don't see it going any further back, I don't see it coming any further forward.
Mike, you mentioned, there's an office, obviously, somebody will be there throughout the day, you're expecting people to come in throughout the day. Do you have an idea what...
Is this by appointment, or?
Yeah, it would absolutely be by appointment.
It will be by appointment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Somebody can't just come in and get their car, right?
Yeah, it, it, it's not going to be that type of thing, where someone's just going to be there, you're becking call. Definitely not at the beginning, but as the place fills up, then maybe there'll be somebody there steadily, you know, from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night, something, you know, some kind of hours.
You don't have an handle on how many, you know, what your turnover?
Again, I mean, the turnover on a daily weekend, from what I've understood at other places similar to this, I'm going to say that it's, it's probably in like, the 5 percentile of what you have, so, 5 percentile, so if, if you had, you know, 10 cars, you know, you're only going to have maybe one or two going out. So, it's not really big, because a lot of people just don't have the storage at home, and they want to be able to leave their pride and joy somewhere where it's going to be safe and dry and clean, and, and obviously, without, you know, mice going through the exhaust or into the car, and so, I mean, that's like a big thing.
Will you be cleaning cars?
No.
Okay, and then, will the cars be, will you ever have like, trucks delivering the vehicles, or would they mostly just drive?
I mean, as we discussed, I mean, you know, the, the possibility of a flatbed or, or trailer of some sort coming in is, is definitely there, but that's not going to be too, like a daily event, I mean, that's only going to be for a delivery or pickup, if the car's going out for some type of service, and a lot of people don't even like to drive their vehicle out of the garage, I mean, I'm one of them, you know, I mean, I will literally put my car in a trailer and take it to where it's going to go, and then bring it back that way, just so that, you know, road, road chips and, and road rash from, you know, cars in front of you kicking stuff up, I mean, we're not very fond of that, so, but again, you know, going back to, I guess, your question, I, I really think that the level of expectation of people coming in on, or about daily to move their equipment out, is going to be very many, very. I don't want to say it's going to be one or two, but I think it's going to be real close to that number on a daily basis.
So, part, part of what we're trying to identify here is how much external parking you would need, so theoretically, if I'm coming, and I want to pick up my car, because I'm going to a car show or something like that, am I going to leave my own vehicle, am I going to park that, my own vehicle, whatever my day car is?
That's going to go in your spot, your car comes down...
So it's going to, it's going to actually be parked in the building while I'm gone?
Correct.
And are these lifts, I'm assuming they'll, they'll lift any type of vehicle, so if I'm...
Pretty much.
Driving a pickup, or I'm driving a sedan, or whatever?
Correct.
SUV?
It could, but that's not the, that's not what we're going after, that's not the type of business that we're going after.
No, no, I'm talking about if I'm driving my regular car to pick up my car, and I need to...
It could, yes, it could pick it up, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
On-site circulation for, you know, I know you said rare occasion, but say a flatbed or something coming in, circulation or on-site, that can be demonstrated, right?
Well, that question came up with the zoning board as well, we don't anticipate needing much parking here. The parking actually is a function of how the building laid out, and then kind of what we were left over, relative to the existing parking area and paved area that we have. So, we're showing a total of nine spaces for, for, you know, in the proposed conditions plan. There's a look, there's a location, the existing paved area that sits next to the existing garage, which actually works pretty well relative to bringing in, if a flatbed came in, I need to drop off the vehicle, to get it out of the way, drop the vehicle off, go on its way, and then make its way out of here, but, you know, certainly...
The flatbed get out, if, you know, if it comes, the vehicle, it would back out?
It would, well, it wouldn't back out on 216, it would have to turn, and make it, make a movement. Now, again, whether that's a two-point turn, you know, as part of this, we'll have to provide you those radiuses to make sure, you know, make sure it works when they're coming out, nose out on 216, so...
What's happening with the, the flipping garage? Anything?
Supposed to remain, and it's not that old.
Are you going to make it look like the building, do any facade work there?
I mean, it's never been, I think it looks similar to like Brady's house now.
No, I know.
I mean, if, if that's what you're looking at.
Same look, you know?
Yeah, no, that's, 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 be honest with you.
I know there's no look yet, but...
It's, it's, it's actually, I think it's, it's, is it metal? I think it's metal.
No, it's, it's wood with vinyl siding, and windows and...
So, that hasn't been something that's been considered, but that may make some sense to try and, again, try and make things complement each other.
Michelle, what, Michelle, what use does this fall on the...
Well, I mean, I think it's going to be very similar to Guardian Storage, in my opinion. So, Michelle, knowing that the applicants representing that the, I'm going to say customers, for lack of a better word, but customers would, their personal vehicle would go into the space when they're taking their classic vehicle or expensive vehicle out for some purpose, as far as external parking and site circulation, is there any, is there anything for Guardian, I know for Guardian, we required very little external parking, so...
I think, I mean, I, I wouldn't, based on what he's telling me about his business model, I wouldn't be so concerned that they would need extra parking. My only concern, and this is something that's always a concern, when you have a new site and isn't, isn't unique to this application, is just that if, in the event that this business no longer exists, you're a B1 with a very large building and a very small parking lot, so you end up making, if, if you decide that you were ever going to sell the building, it ends up being a difficult building to reuse, potentially, because of the parking issue.
Also, these, these spaces could fill up. Couldn't somebody park their car and go get their car inside and go out for a drive?
That's not the way it's going to be.
No, that's...
But that's not what my policy is going to be. I mean, in other words, if somebody's going to bring their car, theoretically, they need to house their car within the building.
Within the building?
Within the building. I mean, you know, one of the things that I've done even currently, I mean, I have my own personal car trailer outside, but if that was able to go in the building, it would be in the building, because I don't like to leave anything outside, I like for the space to be outside, to be open and wide, so that if we did have a truck come in, what happens if all of a sudden they get into the turning radius and they can't turn, because there's a car or something's in the way? Now what do you do?
Where's your car trailer going to go now?
Oh, it'd be in the garage.
It'll be in the garage?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, because your cars will be in there.
Correct.
Sorry, you might have mentioned that the use of the existing car, that's going to remain, right? What is that, that's storage?
Personal storage, how about?
Or repairs?
No, no.
You know, that's important too, because automobile, automobile use automatically goes to cleaning and repairs and servicing and floor drains and things like that, that's, this is, this is a climate, I think the Guardian represents, it's a climate-controlled vehicle storage, and, and those other...
I mean, it's, it's could be also considered a service business, you know?
It's, it's a warehouse.
Do you store a car at, like Guardian, in one of those units?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You can, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's just...
I think the difference with what they have, I, I've never been there, I want to make sure, you know, I've never been there, but I believe that those type self-storage units, you open up the door, you got to push the car in, because you can't get out of it, you can't drive it in, because there's no room, and it's not going to be climate-controlled, it's not going to be, I'm going to say environmentally friendly to rodents getting in or getting into the car, so I mean, that's going to be an issue, and that's not what we're looking for.
Have you ever thought of giving tours?
A tour?
Yeah. When this thing is chock-full, you'll get requests, so...
It might, might look more like a museum.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, 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 of the...
Yeah, that's who he's talking about.
Do you have plenty of Lamborghinis and so forth? That's interesting.
So, so, Mike, I'm going to ask you the question, and I think the ZBA may have also asked you, have you talked to the DEC about a possible use of the buffer to move this building back into the buffer a little bit?
I haven't yet, but as part of that discussion, yes, we have to petition them to find out. I, I, what I mentioned to them, which you know as well, the answer is, the first thing is to try and keep out of it, and then there has to be circumstances by which, to allow us to go ahead and remove that buffer and permitting and so forth. So, we will have to reach out to them, certainly at a minimum, relative to the zoning board, as one of the other items to be able to justify, even granting a variance, would be to have that, that opinion from them, relative to saying yes, hay, or nay.
Because it seems fairly benign, as far as, like, you, if you move the building back into the buffer a little bit, and I don't, I'm not speaking for the DEC, but...
I mean, that's all grassed area back there, so you're, you're mowing that, right?
Yeah, right, no, that is, that is...
That's what I'm saying, it may make sense, because then you get a little bit more setback from the road, you can screen it a little bit better, and...
And if that, if, if they're willing to entertain that, that's great, because, you know, we're, we're trying to work with, with staying out of that, and such, with setting up this building footprint in terms of its location, so...
Yeah, well, and you'd be able to screen it better, it would, you know, with, with the height that you're proposing, you're, you're pretty tight to the road. I know you don't have a specific height yet, but, you know...
20 feet to the property line, we have about a four foot, you know, four to five foot from the property line to the actual edge of pavement, travel, you know, not traveling, but edge of shoulder, so...
I'd see if you can get it back.
You know, when, at the ARB, part of it was, is when you're coming down 216, and, you know, that's, by the time you get in front of this building, you're kind of by the building, but it's the approaches, so there was a lot of focus on the end elevations in terms of what that would look like, and, and trying, so, you know, that was some of the good input that we had there, and we're trying to work around it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from our professionals, board members?
I think it's, welcome, it's good for the board.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else for us, Mike, or any other questions you have for us?
Again, this was just try and get a flavor, there's a lot of things going on, well, the reason there's a few things going on here, because I have a very limited space in which to work, so, so, you know, getting this input and getting it from the other boards will allow for us to proceed in, in some kind of direction.
You already mentioned, you know, landscaping, I would say lighting as well is going to be important, especially because you're going to be very tight to the road, so, you know, all of that stuff, just to understand.
And I will say, I, I don't plan on lighting it up like a baseball field, because I don't want to attract attention.
Yeah.
Even now, I mean, it's, I don't know what's going to happen with all the trees that we planted seven or eight years ago, some of them may have to be removed, and maybe we can leave the rest of them there, but I like to keep it, I want to say low-key, without drawing a lot of attention to the property, because then other things happen.
Right.
Even the house, it's there, you know, about seven or eight years ago when it was rented to a tenant, somebody broke in, and, you know, the local cop seemed to always pull into the property and kind of like hang out in the driveway, which is fine by me, but it just so happens, is when the house got broken into, the cameras that we have around the property caught the kid, and as, just like you have in here, you know, the kid walked past with all the goods in his arms, and all of a sudden he looked up, and, you know what he said?
Yeah.
But the cop didn't have to do anything, had a thumb drive, we loaded it up, loaded it up, he went and picked up the kid, he goes, you know what I got, right? And the kid just gave it up, I mean, you know, so I don't want to attract a lot of attention, it doesn't need to be, because, again, if they do get in, obviously, that's just going to make things worse, so we don't want that.
Are you going to, are you going to be able to fit that car trailer inside the existing garage?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just looking at it now, it looks taller than...
Oh, no, I don't know what you're looking at, the one I, that might be a very old picture.
What's that big trailer right there?
That's old.
That's old? Is that storage unit still there?
Yeah, it's been there since I bought the house.
What's in there?
Just parts, stuff that I take off, you know, one car or another car.
Stay by them, appreciate it.
Wheels and tires, stuff of that, and just car parts. But that picture was probably two years ago.
But nobody's going to work on the cars in this building?
No, it's not what we do.
Okay.
Not that I can't do it, but I, that's not what I'm doing.
Well, thank you for bringing this in.
I will answer your question though, Jason.